Councilmember Fagerly. Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second and discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next to the consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the City Council minutes of July 15th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of July 22nd, Planning Commission minutes of July 17th, an application for exempt permit for West Central Ducks Unlimited, the appointment of Khalif Basur to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Accounts Payable Report, July 11th through July 31st, for council's acceptance, the Park and Recreation Board minutes of July 17th, and council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board Meeting Summary of June 12th, and the Invest in Wilmer Board Meeting Summary of June 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next is a first public hearing, which is authorization of real, sale of real property to James Vianney and a resolution to consider the land purchase agreement. It will be two separate items, so. Ms. Wedberg? I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Mayor members of the council, tonight we have the public hearing to consider the land sale for James Vianney. If you remember from last meeting, this was a small portion of the old wastewater treatment plant. It's on the eastern, kind of northeast side of that. This particular party has a couple parcels that abut the city property, and he currently has an easement agreement with the city over this piece that he's interested in purchasing. We have worked with a surveyor in town to create a legal description for this small piece of property. There will be an easement for a water line that runs straight through it, so we don't really anticipate a whole lot of building. It's more just to clean up his, his piece that he's been working on. He currently uses it just for, for trucks to be able to access the south end of his building. And, and he would continue that same use there, just for storage, cold storage for his property that he also has on First Street. Planning Commission reviewed this on February 11th, and Community Development Committee reviewed it, oh, my bad, they've reviewed it on the 11th, and Planning Commission reviewed it on February 20th. And it was introduced on July 15th. So it would be staff recommendation for the ordinance to be adopted, assigned a number and published, and then also for, to adopt the resolution to approve the vacant land purchase agreement with James Vianney and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute a version thereof.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak? Seeing in hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
The ordinance?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the ordinance authorizing the sale of real property to James Vianney. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That ordinance resolution passes. Next is a resolution for consideration of land purchase agreement, which spells out the terms in the, in the document that we received. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. The basic, the price agreed upon by the buyer is $15,500, and also the cost of the survey, which was approximately $2,000, and is subject to City Council approval this evening.
That, for clarification, that $2,000 is within that $15,000, so the
What is?
The total sale would be $15,500.
Okay. $15,500 for the sale of property. Additional discussion. I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Yep.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you for your work, we appreciate it. Next, we have Community Development report for July 22nd. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, July 22nd at 5:15 at City Hall. Item two was public comments, there was no one there to speak to us. Item three is natural gas line extension. Aaron Backman, Executive Director of the EDC, was present to inform the committee of our request to approve the cost participation in a natural gas line extension into Wilmer Industrial Park four addition to serve Bacchus Technology and other vacant lots. The fourth addition industrial park is west of County Road 5. The attachments show the current occupied lots and the vacant lots. The second attachment shows existing natural gas lines in green, while the orange line pertains to what is being proposed, industrial park three addition. There is a line that comes from Highway 12 and comes along past Relco down 28th Street to Trot Avenue. There's also an existing two-inch line that goes east and west from County Road 5 on the east side and goes to Magnum Trucking. There's no gas, natural gas in the northern two-thirds of the fourth addition. The EDC is requesting that the committee recommend to the City Council that they partner with Bacchus Technology to fund a 2,450-foot extension of a four-inch natural gas pipeline from the intersection of Trot Avenue Southwest and 28th Street Southwest to near the intersection of 32nd Street Southwest and Third Avenue Southwest. CenterPoint Energy is willing to extend a four-inch line nearly a half a mile to the Bacchus Building at a cost of $14,324. Bacchus Technology is asking if the cost of the line extension can be shared between the city and their business. They state that the new line will serve 13 other lots in the fourth addition. At 290 feet, their property represents 12% of the total distance, or $1,719 of the cost. Bacchus is willing to pay a 4,000, or 80, or 28% of the cost if the city is willing to pick up the difference, which is $10,324. In 2016, the City of Wilmer and EDC partnered in pursuing a shovel-ready site certification for the fourth addition of the Wilmer Industrial Park. That doesn't mean that there will not be additional site improvements that will be needed from time to time. Mr. Backman expressed that he thinks this extent, extension will be positive development. There are 25 lots in the fourth addition. This one natural gas pipeline will serve 14 of them. I asked if the city could charge developers who build on the vacant lots a tapping fee, so the city is able to get their money back, and Mr. Backman proposed that the city's portion of the project be paid out of the Wilmer Industrial Fund, which is currently a balance of approximately $1 million. And I don't see a reply, but it could be a tapping fee or will increase the price of the vacant lots. So we should be able to get our money back. Councilman Schwantes asked if Bacchus needs a four-inch line and if we would be overbuilding to accommodate future users. Staff explained that a four-inch line would, would be to accommodate future development. Councilmember Mesky inquired about the existing two-inch line north of the properties to see if the line would suffice for the 14 potential properties, and if there was a draw for developers to have a natural gas available. Mr. Backman said that it would not be sufficient. Corey Bacchus had a conversation with CenterPoint Energy representative, who expressed that the line would not be to service the industrial park. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the cost participation in the natural gas line extension into the Wilmer Industrial Park four addition. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve a consideration of natural gas extension cost share between Bacchus Technology and the City of Wilmer. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Just another comment. Originally, CenterPoint was going to charge $28,000, Mr. Bacchus, and I believe Mr. Backman negotiated with them, and they said if it could be done before the winter season, so by the end of October, because it takes like six weeks to draw up the plan, they would do it at this cost. It's very reasonable.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume that the, the four-inch sizing would be sufficient to, to handle a number of different types of properties or developments that may be looking to be out here, so this would just add as something they could tap right into without further, without further upsizing? Versus a two-inch line?
Mr. Backman.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Plowman, yes, the four-inch line would accommodate additional development out there. A two-inch line, which would be the minimum to service the Bacchus Technology area, would, would serve, obviously Bacchus Technology, but not much more. And I think it's prudent that we look at something that's going to have more capacity. If there was a large development, say, on the magnitude of 100,000 square feet, and it was a manufacturing facility or food processing, the way the structure is for, for the rate, for the CenterPoint Energy side of things is that they charge installation costs based upon expected natural gas demand. Typically, the businesses with larger loads get the better deal. They get the, experience greater discounts on installation costs. So if there was a large entity, they could conceivably extend a six-inch line, and that's a lot of capacity to put in six inches. So at this point, four inches would be good.
Thank you.
Just one question. Councilmember Nelson.
Just one question. If someone were to buy all of those lots, it looks like it's running down the middle of some of the lots. So is the location of it beneficial if someone were to come and want to purchase a majority of those lots?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, in terms of, of the location of it, our, our tables were fairly generic. It, it will be on the south side of Trot, and then it will turn, go underneath the road, and it will be on the east side of 32nd. So we, we won't be tearing up roads, they'll bore underneath the Trot Avenue, but.
So that's different than what's on the map?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
The other 11 lots that wouldn't be serviced by this line, they said there's 25, and this would service 14, where are they located?
They would be located closer to Magnum Trucking.
Okay.
So there's a couple lots on the north side of Wilmer Avenue that are there, that are not, they would not be serviced by either the two-inch line that is only serving Magnum, or by this one.
Okay, so that would be a matter of then of running a line to the south. I was thinking, as long as we were digging up and putting this in, would it make sense to just take care of it to, to service those other 11?
Right. And I should hasten to add that we did ask, Dave and I had discussed this matter, we had asked what the cost would be to do a six-inch line going in half a mile into Bacchus Tech, no, to Bacchus Technology, and the cost of that was $91,000. So they'd be a lot more.
Right. Additional conversation. Councilmember Mesky.
Just to Councilmember Osmus's concern, I asked that very same question, to run it the other way. And I was also told that they'd like to have a terminal customer to where it's serviced, and there isn't a person there. If a company moves into that bottom part, we'll have that conversation, I would assume, about adding a four-inch to the extension on the other piece, because it would be, I had the same thought you did. If we're going to do it, let's do it all at the same time. But they really want us to have that customer at that terminal piece.
Okay.
Additional discussion. I see we're spending money here, and we have it as a motion. Should it be a resolution? Seeing we're spending money. Steve? Finance Director?
The approval, I believe, is just for the city to do that. We would probably have that on our agenda for Thursday night to appropriate the money, and that would be a resolution, you're correct.
Motion been made in seconded, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item three was the floodplain ordinance. Staff informed the committee that he, that'd be Dr. Ramsden, recommends a motion to forward the FEMA enrollment application floodplain ordinance and resolution to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on August 7th, 2019, and then to the City Council on August 19th, 2019, where staff will recommend a motion to introduce the resolution and ordinance for public hearing at the City Council September 2nd, 2019 meeting. Nothing has changed since the first time this has been reviewed. The key point into participating in the flood insurance program is that it allows those who aren't in the floodplain to get NFIB-backed flood insurance or rain and storm sewer disaster, disasters, because it's conspicuously missing from home insurance policies. Secondly, if we do have a national disaster, it would be more likely that there would be aid funding available. Seven properties that are impacted by the flood insurance program have already been built to meet the floodplain zone. Staff feels like it will minimally impact the workload of staff. There were many questions asked at the committee, but what we're looking for is a, there, there was a motion made to move the question of the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIB, forward to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on August 7th, 2019. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to consider participation in the National Flood Insurance Program and have the matter moved forward to the Planning Commission. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, it's okay.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Fagerly.
And item four was updates. This was for information only. It was discussed on all the projects going on in Wilmer. There was 20 of them, and it's going great in Wilmer, so. With that, I'll move to file the minutes.
Motion made in seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development meeting for July 22nd. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next, we have the Public Works Safety Committee report of July 17th. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Public Safety Committee met Wednesday, July 17th in the conference room at City Hall. All committee members were available, as well as our Public Works Director, Sean Christensen, our Public Works Superintendent Gary Manzer, and our Engineering and Administrative Assistant, Kelsey Del Bosque. We called the meeting to order at 5:15, and our first item was our public safety updates, and that was for information only. The item that we had on there for information was a fundraiser that was going to be held on July 20th. We just wanted to get that on the record. And we do have the statistics which should be attached to this packet, and I would open the table for either chief, any questions from the council? With none, moving on. The next item, a discussion of banners. Staff brought forth for discussion the potential of banners to be hung along First Street, Highway 12, and 15th Avenue Northwest by Ridgewater College. The college would provide 100 banners and propose the city supply the brackets, banding, and hang them. The cost of the brackets and banding is $40 per banner, and would take three staff, a minimum of one hour, to hang each banner, using a bucket truck, an aero board truck, and diverting traffic. Following discussions, staff was directed to meet with Ridgewater, MUC, and the Chamber of Commerce about the banners, and this was following lengthy discussion that we had about various times that this topic has come up in the past, not only with Ridgewater College, but maybe with correlation to the chamber, the local chamber, and other businesses and our private entities around town. And so we decided that it would probably be best to send the entire issue back for a, a larger discussion. If we're going to look at hanging banners at some cost to the city around the community, just who all should be involved, and what kind of specific costs are we willing to incur regarding that? And I believe that more information is going to be brought forth regarding that in our next committee meeting. The next item that we moved on to was also for information only, and that was the mowing of private property. Staff brought information regarding the process of violation procedures and fines by Public Works for mowing complaints. Violation letters are mailed certified to property owners when the grass and/or weeds reaches a height of seven inches or taller. The letter gives the owner seven days from the date of the letter to mow, and if not, the city will mow it, and the property owner is billed. The committee discussed fines, including the $40.42 per hour for labor, $35 per hour for the mower, and $18 for the truck and trailer, and a $75 administrative fee. I believe that item is still being left for discussion, because we did discuss the difference between residential properties, commercial properties, the size of these different properties, and the fact that a one-size-fits-all rule just doesn't work in these cases, that if we're looking at bank-owned properties versus privately owned and commercial establishments, there may be a whole bunch of different variables that, that we have yet to take into consideration. But we also realize that what's on the books right now is, is kind of old and probably has to be redone and a little bit more thorough. And also, we got to get closer to recouping our costs, because there is a lot of cost when it comes to the city, Public Works Department personnel, and the, the city staff in the city office, taking these complaints, going out, checking out the complaints and whatnot. So the conversation that was had at the table, and any other committee members are free to chime in on the, on the topic too. From the best of my recollection, we, we believe that it is best to go about looking at the issue and, and coming up with a more comprehensive plan that will put a little bit more teeth into the structure of things now, and also with the goal of gaining compliance, of course, to make for a more attractive community. Any questions regarding that? For our Public Works Director, or anything the Public Works Director wants to add? Mayor?
I just wanted to add that when we talk about having more teeth, we wanted it to consider raising the cost, so that hopefully they're nudged towards having a private person mow it, instead of having to go through the hassle of, of having to have the city take care of it. And they do have a number of properties that are just the same old, same old, that they take care of every year.
Absolutely. I had a resident contact me this week, or this past week, and he's interested in mowing, and I know that in the past, we had citizens that did it. But then I know that there was a lack of interest, and so we stopped doing that. But is that something that the committee would consider, having a citizen do it again? Or do we want to stay with the way it is, or was that talked about? I know in the past, it was a problem, because we couldn't find anybody to do it.
And that's kind of where the conversation led to, but then also stopped. I, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the committee. It was my impression that, that everything's on the table at this point. We want to be creative. We want to work with our Public Works staff, and we want to work with our Public Works Superintendent, who's running the guys, and they're also in, you know, they do all the communications from City Hall out there and to try to find the best, most efficient, and cost-effective solution to the problem. So I see no reason why that could not be a potential solution.
So then who's the Ward Four representative on the committee?
I am.
You are? So I'll refer the gentleman to you.
I am.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Chairman. Like the mayor did say, individuals used to do it, and I didn't know we quit using individuals. But we do have a fee schedule, and I think it's more than $40.42 per hour per man, isn't it?
I'll have to refer to our Public Works Director for the specific dollar values.
Yeah, and I don't know what, what a, a specific operator would be billed out at when you, when you calculate the, the billable rate, but it's absolutely more than $40.42.
Yeah, and that's why I thought we had that fee schedule, in case, well, for insurance purposes. And if we did do this, or we hired out to other communities, we'd get reimbursed. I wouldn't change the fee to $40.42 when the fee is higher on our ordinance, our approved list. We have it for equipment, trailers, trucks, everything, so.
If.
It'd be the same.
Yeah, if I may, I, I believe it's a, a misprint, or it's maybe taken out of context, but we're definitely not talking about, no fees were talked about being lowered. Because if anything, we were punching numbers, saying the cost that the city is incurring right now is exorbitantly higher than, than, than what we're charging. So at no point are we considering lowering any fees. So like I said, if that dollar amount in there is, is miscontextualized or something, I apologize.
Well, with all of the fees, it came out to $168.40, but we were talking about even making it more, so that they would go to a private.
Yeah.
And they'd not take our staff time.
Right.
To have to take.
But you can increase the administrative fee. The other ones should be set in stone, what the hourly rate is, and the trailer rate and the tractor rate, so. We already have that, it'd be up to the administrative fee.
And for our Public Works Director, I believe we did have discussion about possibly just that, about either a fee, fine, whatever, whatever you want to call it, but a, a maybe overarching dollar value? I know that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, Councilmember Fagerly is exactly right. These fees, the hourly rate and the vehicle rate, mower rate, is set each year by the council, and we reevaluate that each year. And so you're, you're right, we can't increase those fees for one item. But, so our options would be administrative fee, or, like you said, a, a fine for us, you know, to, to do the, the nuisance fine, if you will, because that's, that's the clause, or that's the ordinance that it falls under.
No, we shouldn't lose money.
Do we, I, I would like to refer to Mr. Christensen as far as the number of, of these yards that we do, and is that really feasible? That a volunteer would do it? I know one of the issues we talked about was the damage to equipment. No, we would be paying this person?
They would get paid the same fee. Freeze our staff up to do what we hired them to do. We, we didn't hire our staff to pay private yards, I'm sorry.
Right. Okay.
We didn't hire them to mow private yards. So what we had before is, I think we had three or four people that were on our list, and it rotated through, and then what ended up happening is those people fell off and said, you know, they were tired of getting harassed, if you will, by the people. And then we had an issue where one of the people didn't put a hose back out for some pump holes, and
Allegedly.
Allegedly, right. They said they did, but the person said they didn't. Then we ended up having, having to pay a loss. I think, didn't we pay a loss? Remember? I think we paid a loss on it. So that's why we decided to take it in-house. But, I mean, I think we have people in our community that are willing to do this work. I mean, I'm not trying to speak for the committee here, but I think the committee should, should clearly look at that. Because, you know, 100 and, what did you say it was, 162 what?
168.
$168.40? You know, to mow us, to mow us a lot, you know, I mean, we have people in town that would, that could use that money. And we certainly could use our staff doing what we hired them for. You know, I mean, it's, it's under the other duties as a sign, but, you know, they don't like doing that either, you know. I remember when they had to go to Super America last year, it was just, I mean, staff was just wringing their hands of having to put a city truck over there, and it's not, it's not, it's not our job.
Thank you. I just wanted to add just a couple of comments, you know, to the discussion, and this can go back to the committee for further discussion, but there's an underlying principle that go back to the committee for further discussion, but there's an underlying principle that government can only charge what it really costs to mow the grass. I mean, then that's why we have the fees. We've calculated out the trucks, so we can't just arbitrarily just say, well, let's make it $1,000, because that, when it gets to court, is going to, you know, going to get thrown out, so it has to reflect actual cost. I don't know that I've ever seen where we've had citizens pick up the mowing, I think predominantly because of the liability factor. You don't know what their equipment is like, you don't know their skill, et cetera, et cetera. You can mow your own grass, but when the city hires you to mow somebody else's grass, we got to make sure that the liability is taken care of. And thirdly, I think there's absolutely no reason why, if we said we wanted a contract with a lawn care company, they've got the liability insurance, we could easily do that, where we just say, we're not going to do it, and whenever you have these sites identified, you call up the lawn company that you've got contracted for that service. You don't have to worry about the liability, because they've got it, and they've got the equipment, and they can get in and get out, and usually, you're just charging what... You're charging the property owners what it costs for them to do it, plus an administration fee. So, these are just some ideas that the committee may want to, you know, think about as they pick this issue back up, because I think, you know, generally speaking, we'd like to stop repeat offenders, and there's mechanisms that the city council could use to increase that cost also, because the repeat offenders are the ones that you see year after year after year, three or four times a year, and you don't... You want to get them off that. So, I understand the need to get the price up so that it gets their attention, but it has to be within reason of what the actual cost to the city is, unless the city attorney would have other comments.
Yeah, just, yeah, substitute city attorney. But just from the labor employment end, I mean, so just to be technical, when we say, excuse me, have residents do it, they'd either have to be treated as seasonal, temporary, or intermittent employees, or, as Brian was indicating, we'd have to have an independent contractor relationship through a contract with liability insurance, equipment, et cetera. So, it can't be volunteer, or we'll just call up Joe Smith down the street to mow a specific. So, again, either they're employees, or we have a contract with either individuals, which it can, and/or, as Brian indicated, a lawn care company.
Yeah, I think what we did in the past is they were under professional services agreement, so they were covered that way. But you're right, I mean, liability's an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we were talking about just going willy-nilly, raising prices. That's not the point. I think what we're thinking about is, there's a cost to our equipment, there's a risk to our employees, and we wanted to value those, and, you know, if we can get five years out of a lawnmower, but we're doing this extra stuff, it brings it down to three years, we've lost. So, we have to factor in those variables to reflect what this is costing the city to, you know, put our people into those situations with our equipment. So, I think we're thinking about approaching it logically and not just saying, oh, let's throw a dollar figure on this. So, there's more to it than just that. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we move on? Good discussion, thank you. Appreciate it. With that, then we did also move on to the tree trimming policy. Staff brought the information regarding the city's tree trimming and maintenance policy. It outlines the city assuming basic responsibility for the planting and maintenance of trees adjacent to city streets to provide safe vehicle and pedestrian passage. Various pruning methods were discussed, as well as noting 175 new trees were planted this year, and we did have some discussion regarding that, and I think there's a little bit more paperwork in here, but I know that the Public Works Department frequently has to deal with calls regarding tree trimming and going back to the basics and the city ordinances regarding trees, and which trees belong to the city, and which trees belong to the homeowners, and which trees are the responsibilities of the respective parties. And I know it goes over and over and over every single year, but it is something that a city does take seriously in terms of their tree planting policy, and I know that our Public Works Director did point out, and I believe also Mr. Manzer pointed out, that they went to great lengths this year to source as many trees as they possibly could, and especially high-quality trees from local vendors as well, to try and get just as many in the ground as what they could. If we don't have any questions regarding that, Mr. Overado?
I had the opportunity to go to the Corrin Open Garden this past weekend, and while I was there, I was approached by a community member, and I thought this was an interesting idea, something to think about, but she suggested having fruit trees. I don't know, apple, pear, whatever, planted in community areas where people could get the fruit and use it, and kind of a renewable service, renewable product, so to speak, and then in the spring, it's obviously flowering, it's real pretty, but then there bears fruit, hopefully, and then the public can have it. I understand when nobody collects a fruit, then you have a mess, rotten apples, bees, pears, whatever, but I thought that was something to consider or to think about, maybe in the idea of a tree variety to be used, maybe in a... Not along the boulevard, but maybe in a public commons area. Something to think about. I thought that was an interesting suggestion, so thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, and finally, we discussed the 2019 Improvement Project, and we had an update, and this was for information only, and the... Oh, boy, I may have to jump to somebody else's device, because mine just crashed, but from what I can remember, the 2019... 2019 projects are underway. The 19th Avenue overlay project is almost complete. The aprons are completed, the mill and overlay on the entire stretch are completed. Obviously, the work still continues at the roundabout at 5 and 19, and I do even believe that the pathway, if I'm correct since then, has been overlaid. Is that correct, Mr. Christensen?
The...
The pathway south of 19th?
That wasn't an overlay, that was a new path.
Yep.
And it is complete, yes. It looks like they need to do some topsoil restoration and some seeding.
All right, and then beyond that, let's see, I think a member here at this table would be quite familiar with one of the streets, that being Fifth, that's currently being worked on, and the timeliness of the rain, it's hit and miss, but I also get to watch the contractors do their good work or try their best every day working at that one, and since that time, I believe we'll probably have future updates coming up at this next meeting that we have to talk about. And that was it for that meeting, so there being no further items to discuss, I will motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second to file a Public Works Safety Committee Report for July 17th. Discussion, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, February or whenever we had all the snow, we talked about a city snow ordinance. Have you thought about having that on the agenda, or just continue with the downtown city ordinance?
Well, we are getting together a nice calendar, like we have in finance. We're getting a good calendar together, and I do believe that we're starting to take a look at, okay, what's coming in the winter months, and we're trying to plan ahead and schedule ahead to make sure that the important topics hit the desk long in advance, so that anything that we decide to do or need to discuss can make it to this table well in advance of winter. Let's not even say the word. But, yeah, just, I guess, for the sake of getting it on the record, let's plan on that issue coming to Public Works very soon and being discussed, and then hopefully, something being forwarded to council that is agreeable.
Okay, thank you.
Additionally, just piggyback on that a little bit, you got to remember that it's a three-month process, so from the time that you bring it to the council, to the time that you introduce it, to the time you publish it, to the time that you adopt it, if there's no hiccups, it's three months. So, you're eight now, eight plus three is 11, which is close to snow.
There's no way it's going to snow before it come out. No, let's be... No, duly noted, Mr. Mayor. Duly noted, thank you.
Motion made in second, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion to file the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next, we have Finance Committee Report for July 18th. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, July 18th, at the City Office Building. There were three council members present. Councilmember Nelson, Palmer, and Osmus were available. Also was Finance Director Okens. We called the meeting to order at 5:30, and there was no public comments. The one action item that we have is acknowledgement of donations. Staff presented the list of donations received in the second quarter, and as required by state statute, we need to adopt a resolution to accept those donations. The second quarter donations were from the Healthy Willmar Together, Blue Cross Blue Shield, totaling $600, and were for the Bike Share Program. It was moved and seconded and passed to recommend the council pass the resolution accepting the donations, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the donations for second quarter. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Adai, Zornes.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The discussion items by the committee, we discussed numerous items as follows: cash and investment reports, budgetary amendment process, special assessment policy, and the upcoming meeting schedule. Additional information was requested from staff in regards to detailed cash and investments by the fund, future departmental and capital budget amendments, and deferred assessment status for development in the northwest part of the city. Also reviewed was the committee meeting schedule. There is no other business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at, I don't think it was 1:10.
It was a long meeting.
We had a long meeting. The meeting was adjourned, and if there are no other questions regarding that item, I would enter a motion for the minutes of the meeting.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Next is consideration of state temporary liquor permit, Foxhole Brew House. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I recently received an application and permit for a one-day-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license from Foxhole Brew House for their anniversary party to be held August 24, 2019, and it's my recommendation to approve that.
Motion made in second to approve the Foxhole Brew House anniversary celebration state temporary liquor permit. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Adai, Zornes.
That motion passes. Next is council member announcements. We'll start with Councilmember Osmus.
I will pass.
Councilmember Palmer.
I will pass, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a reminder that we have finance meeting this week on Thursday.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I pass.
Councilmember Mesky.
Final Rockin' Robins is tomorrow night. It has been very well attended. It seems like every night, there's more and more, and we're having our fourth one. I'm going to be remiss on forgetting the opening act, but I know that the headliner is the fabulous Armadillos, and they're doing an Eagles tribute, and if you're around, come on out, get on a bus, and save yourself the parking hassle, but it's been a wonderful event, and I am glad to be part of it.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Amen to that, and thank you to everyone who's been making that happen.
I was also going to say, go to Rockin' Robins. It's a good time.
Councilmember Overado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things, we got the county fair coming up, and there's going to be some volunteers at the census booth, stop in, start to learn about the census. It's very important, so check that out. And then on Tuesday, I don't want to use the word competition, but we do have National Night Out. A lot of our service organizations, such as the police department and the fire department, participate in that, so if it's occurring in your neighborhood, please take time to go there, and maybe you have to split a little early to get to the Rockin' Robins, but take a moment to get to know your neighbors. I know where I live, we have a nice one. Fire department shows up, the police department shows up, the EMT show up. It's a lot of fun for the kids. Target contributes stuff, and different organizations contribute, so take a moment to get involved with the National Night Out. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a closed session for labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota state statute, start of the meeting. The next agenda item is labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statute, Section 13D, .03, sub 1, clause B. A portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant... This portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to such statute upon a duly approved motion of the city council. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. The time is?
7:45.
7:45. We're in closed session. Those not to be here can excuse themselves.